City Clerk, to be made a part of our record, the city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to the business of the council. Matters that are germane to the business of the council means matters that the city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, or your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of the ordinance. Please silence your phones. Prior to the meeting, Bishop Joe Baker with Refuge Nation Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Coleman will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of the council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but are under no obligation to do so.
We can take a moment to power heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today lifting up the city council of Newport News. Lord, we ask that you'd guide their footsteps as they lead our city. Let your wisdom be their compass and may your favor rest upon them in every decision they make. Grant them clarity, compassion, and understanding to lead in a way that is fair and just for all people, every neighborhood and every background. Let their leadership bring unity, strength, and progress. We pray for our families, our senior citizens, our jobs, and school systems, that each be blessed, supported, and impacted in a positive way. Cover our city with your protection, Lord. Surround us with your peace and keep us safe from harm. Father, we also lift up our mayor, even in his absence right now. We ask, and Lord, that you'll cover him as he does all that he can do to lead our great city of Newport News. Continue to give him and everyone around him who serves the strength and endurance to keep pushing through every challenge, both known and unknown. Always remind them that you are right there with them, guiding, strengthening, and never leaving their side. Give Newport News favor with our neighboring cities, and together we may grow stronger and more connected. And let love and fairness and justice spread from our city throughout the state and country and even our world. And Father, we just want to take one quick moment to just continue to cover our former mayor. He had to bury his wife, and we know that that had to been tough. And we asking you, Lord, that you'll continue, God, to give him the strength, God, for he's served many, many, many years. And God, we just want to say thank you, Lord, for all that you'll continue to do in all of our lives. And it's in your name we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman Tina Vick and Councilman John Ely from this meeting?
So moved.
Is there... It has been moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carried, four, four zero.
Thank you. May I also have a motion to allow Mayor Philip Jones to participate in this meeting from a remote location through electronic communication means as his attendance at a mayor's conference is preventing his physical attendance. It has been moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
I mean, he can still vote. Do we got him? All right, we'll assume he's, uh, he's present. This evening, we have resolutions of appreciation to present. So if Councilwoman Sharon Scott, will you please join me at the podium? There you go.
All right, got him.
Councilman Harris?
I appreciate you. All right. Whereas, the council of the city of Newport News, Virginia wishes to honor and recognize Sharon P. Scott, MPA, for more than twenty years of service as a member of the Newport News City Council. Give it up for her, please. And whereas, from July of two thousand and two through December of two thousand and twenty-two, Sharon P. Scott served the citizens of the city of Newport News as a representative of the North District. And whereas, Sharon P. Scott served as an advocate for transparency and citizen participation in government, holding regular town hall meetings in the North District. She also sought to assist those in need, coordinating an annual North District food drive starting in two thousand and two. And whereas, a longtime Newport News resident, Sharon P. Scott received an associate's degree in science from Paul D. Kent Community College, a bachelor of arts in English from Christopher Newport University, and a master's degree of public administration from the University of Phoenix. And whereas, in addition to her service on city council, Sharon P. Scott has served as the founder and president of a small minority-owned business in the area for more than twenty years. And whereas, Sharon P. Scott served as a passionate vocal leader and advocate for the citizens of her district and the citizens of the city as a whole, and served in leadership positions on numerous boards and commissions, including the Peninsula Airport Commission, Sister Cities, Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads, Hampton Roads Regional Jail, and the Hampton Roads Sports Media Hall of Fame, and the Community Development Block Grant Committee. She participated in the National League of Cities, serving on its Community and Economic Development Committee and Military Communities Council, as well as Virginia Municipal League's General Laws Committee. And whereas, Sharon P. Scott received numerous awards and recognitions for her contributions to the community, including American Legion Post 368 Annual Leadership Award, Daily Press Open Door Award, Christopher Newport Distinguished Alumni, Fort Use's Ninety-third Signal Brigade Lightning Warrior Certificate of Appreciation, the NAACP Living Legend Award, YWCA Women of Distinction, Demi Military Retirees Club Distinguished Community Service Award, Light of Hope Community Service Award, and several other acknowledgements and accolades. And whereas, Sharon P. Scott has made many valuable contributions to the city, the Virginia Peninsula, and the entire Hampton Roads region, which this council wishes to recognize. That's all, let it rock, let it rock. So I'll invite the councilwoman to come up and share a few words if she would like?
I would. Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to stand here on this side of the podium today instead of being back there, just to say a few words. I'm just humbled by the support I had of the citizens over the twenty and a half years. I'm glad to have my family standing here with me and my friends here and in the audience, my supporters. And these people were just as important to what I did as I was to what I did because they went beneath my wings, my campaign supporters. I mean, they were there with me the whole twenty and a half years, most of them. And I just never forget that. But I always am asked, what is the one thing that I was most proud of in the city of Newport News while I was councilwoman? And I tell everybody that I was the people's choice. I was the person that people could call if they had a problem, and I'll try to direct them in the right direction, you know? And that was so important to me. I started to town hall meetings because if I did not connect with the citizens, I would not know what they need or wanted. So that was the impetus for that. And then, the food drive that he mentioned, which is in his twenty-third year. We did that because at the time we started, over fifty percent of the kids in Newport News received free or reduced lunch. Now, one hundred percent of the kids in Newport News receive free or reduced lunch. But last year, we have transitioned from food to an empowerment affair. And we are now offering job fairs, job readiness programs, first-time home buyers classes, and credit repair. So we're going to do a little bit, do things a little bit differently. But I do want to continue with my team to empower the community. So I thank you all tonight, Mr. Vice Mayor and the council for this recognition, and I appreciate the space.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We're going to get a picture real quick. We're going to do that real quick. Do we got somebody to take a... Yeah, man. Kiss, grab Tiffany for me.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. While they're getting ready, I will say this, when they were reading this, this sounds like an old lady. All, all those things, and you know, where did she ever have time to have a personal life? But I'm grateful.
All right, we got it. Like four or five cameras, but we're going to do it. All right, please give it up for her one more time.
I would like to once again thank Councilwoman Sharon Scott for joining us this evening. Public hearings, page four. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance granting conditional use permit number CU20250001 to Mann Group of Real Estate LLC and Arnesia House to allow for the operation of a childcare center on a point-nine-one acre parcel located at six-one-seven Randolph Road, zoned R4, single-family dwelling. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir, one, Arnesia House.
Ms. House?
Yes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Arnesia House, and I am the owner of Groom for Greatness Learning Center. And the conditional use permit application was entered in by myself to bring a childcare center to the city of Newport News. So I'm here, if you all have any questions or anything, I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have any questions from council? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Thank you. Page fifty-nine, item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute First Amendment to lease, buy, and between the city of Newport News and STC Two LLC, formerly Sprintcom Inc., for the continued maintenance, installation, and operation of all communications facility on the City Farm Tower site located at one hundred City Farm Road. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Moved up.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page seventy-four, minutes of the work session of March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Page eighty-five, minutes of the regular meeting of March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Page one oh one, resolution rescheduling the regular council meeting in July, from July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, to July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, and changing the locations of select regular council meetings for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-five. Page one oh five, resolution of recognition, Karen R. Wilds. Page one zero nine, resolution of appreciation, General Charles Q. Brown, Jr. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items F1 through F5, all-inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Other city council actions. Next on our agenda, other city council actions, page one thirteen, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending city code, Chapter forty-two, water supply, to add a new Article seven on Dyaskin Creek, Little Creek, and Skiff's Creek reservoirs, and to repeal Chapter twenty-nine, Parks, Square, and Recreational Facilities, Article three, on Dyaskin and Little Creek reservoirs. Proposed changes to the city code would eliminate the free and unrestricted use provision, clarify permitted activities on city-owned land, and include Skiff's Creek reservoir in these changes. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Page eleven-nine, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to amend city code, Chapter eleven, watercraft, docks, piers, and waterways, to update and expand rules for mooring and use of city-owned facilities, including the Minchville Public Bulkhead. The changes support ongoing investments at Minchville Marina, enhance enforcement, and improve access for seafood harvesters, helping boost utilization, job creation, and tax revenue. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Appropriations. Page one hundred twenty-six, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
There are three appropriations for your consideration this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating three hundred thousand dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five bond authorization for select improvements to Newport News Parks and Recreation Ballfields at Ella Fitzgerald Middle School. The funding will be used to install lights on the practice field and upgrade the outdated lighting system on the adjacent soccer field. The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating four hundred forty-nine thousand dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two bond authorization for pathometric study services and dredging of Leeward Marina at the Huntington Park Boat Ramp. Last dredged in two thousand and eighteen, both sites now show signs of limited access, and soundings suggest the marina may soon be inaccessible and the ramp unusable for moderate-sized vessels. The third appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating three million, one hundred four thousand, eight hundred thousand dollars of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five Virginia Department of Transportation, transportation alternatives, set aside grant program funds and carbon reduction grant program funds, and seven hundred, seventy-six thousand, two hundred dollars of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five local project funds for three projects. The first is Washington Avenue and Twenty-Fifth Street pedestrian improvements. The second is the Trail seven-five-seven shared use path. And the third is Bates Drive and Choice Neighborhood Initiative's shared use path. I recommend approval of all three appropriations.
Is there a motion to approve item H1 through H3?
Second.
Request for what?
Uh, Councilman Harris.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment on H1 regarding the allocation of funds for the fields at Ella Fitzgerald, which is on Newport News Public Schools, uh, facility. Uh, we had our first neighborhood parks and rec meeting this past week. And one of the questions that came up is the, um, agreement between Parks and Rec and our Newport News Public Schools fields and facility usage. And I would like for us to be able to revisit that agreement that we have with Newport News Public Schools because there's some questions as to the funding that is allocated in regards to usage of those facilities and fields. So, um, within the near future, I am going to move forward with this one. But in the near future, as we continue to appropriate funds and allocate funds through our Parks and Rec for those upgrades on those fields, how we could better collaborate with the school system in order for those facilities to be eligible for others to use. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, you good?
Yes, sir.
All right, call the roll, please.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Motion carried, five zero.
Citizen comments. Item one, citizen comments on matters germane to the business of city council. I will call each name in the order that it appears in front of me. Uh, Chanel Ketchmore. Good evening.
Good evening, honorable Vice Mayor, distinguished counsel, city manager, city attorney. I know you all know me, but for everyone, I'm Chanel Ketchmore, representing Ketchmore Kids. And came here this evening for two reasons. One, just wanted to thank you all for all that you do, the easy decisions, the tough decisions, everything in between. And then, secondly, just wanted to update you on what we have going on as one of the programs that's currently funded, one of your gun violence prevention programs. So with us, we've continued our work. Thankfully homicides are down. Um, situations still happen, you know, on many different levels and many different ways. So we continue to be active in mediating and de-escalating and doing our part. And you know that changing the mindset, you know, that sometimes resorts to violence is just a whole process in and of itself. So it takes time. Right now, we have our think tank tour that is going on with the Boys and Girls Club. They have been amazing, the team has been great. And it's not just conflict resolution, it's interpersonal skill building, it's critical thinking. When parents show up, we're able to engage them with our parenting services so that we can offer support to them as well. And when we go, we're taking financial literacy partners, mental health partners, and Newport News school partners as well to engage with the community. And we continue our work inside the juvenile detention center. We are in there at minimum four times a month, working with the young ladies and... four times a month, working with the young ladies and the young men. We take barbers and hairstylists in there with us, because we know when they feel better, they show up better, their attitude is better, they're more receptive to what we have to share with them. And, um, you know, a lot of the young men that are in that center unfortunately have charges that are violent or have a gun charge, something related to that. And so it's really important for us doing the work that we do, because these are young kids. They're gonna come home, some sooner rather than later, to the same communities that they live, sometimes the same environment. And so we have to work really hard to change their mindset. And we wanna make sure when they do come home that they're not picking up a gun again, that they're not engaging in any type of crime, and especially not in any violent crime. Um, this year already, we've gotten feedback from school teachers who are saying, hey, my student is in your services, their behavior is better in school. Or from caregivers who are saying, my child's attitude is much better. They're less aggressive, less combative. Or from young people, we work with young adults as well, who say, hey, I saw somebody I had a problem with, but instead of fighting them or pulling out a gun, I just kept driving because of what we talked about during our sessions. And even the team in the detention center, um, that, those staff members who talk about the work that we do and how much of a positive impact we're making. So again, we just remain committed to doing the work. That is what we're doing. And just wanted to share that with you all. And we are on board with Friday Night Nets, which will be kicking off. We helped last year. And we started, uh, being on board with those early conversations. And we're at Aqueduct this Friday, the boys' club. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Angela Harris.
Well.
Good evening.
Hi.
How y'all doing? First of all, I wanna say congratulations to the queen. You deserve it. When I first started thirty years ago, big shoes to fill. Um, a lot of wonderful people were here. I see Rob Coleman is back. We're gonna get something done. And I just wanna thank everybody that did attend that meeting at Wesley Grove Baptist Church on Thursday. It was a housing meeting where, um, the young lady, Brandy Callum, done her work as a student. And she entered her work into the Film Fest in Richmond and won some awards. And her work is talking about the land that was stolen, taken, eminent domains from Christopher Newport University. That was our first work. Um, my auntie, Thamra Davis, and her husband is buried in that cemetery. It's a shame how it was advertised, so a lot of people did not get to participate. But don't worry about it. Um, my number is seven-five-seven-eight-four-six-four-zero-one-zero. So we can continue the conversation. We said one city. That means that the marathon should never stop at Twenty-Fifth Street. The city goes to Sixth Street, where Benny McRae built those towers on Sixth Street. We should never be disrespectful and rude. Benny McRae is a Huntington High School graduate. He played for the Chicago Bears. And he is a member, or was a member, of Lightfoot Solomon Miss Shaw Church. Lightfoot Solomon Miss Shaw Centennial Park is on Jefferson Avenue, if you did not know. I'm not sure which one of whoever promised those elders a statue of Miss Shaw, but we need to work on that. We should never lie to the elders. I met with Dr. Cherry before I came here. We should never lie to the children. And we should stay telling the truth. We should have some type of memorial over at Saint Vincent in honor of Gregory Cherry's motherwork. Um, that food program should never not be told that she started that. I think we are very, very rude and disrespectful. Uh, Mr. Maven said, wait until they put all your eggs in one nest, and then you stand up and say, I am. I am the granddaughter of Corporal Charles Henry Harris from World War Two. My mother named Mary Williams. Her mother name was Rosetta Hill. Her mother name was Mary Virgin Thomas. Mary Virgin Thomas helped start Six Mount Zion. She came out of the House of Prayer for all people. I want everyone to know that we have one, one black captain left. His name is Captain John Thomas Harris. He's ninety. He is the nephew of T.C. Walker, the first black attorney from Gloucester. So teach your children who they are. I'm fifty-two. I grew up right here. Ms. Mabel, you know me. We're not playing. Stop lying to our children. Stop stealing our land. Alan Archer, you know we both participated in the Dutch dialogues. We're not the orphan. We are the American Indians. And if we love each other, let's do better. And stop lying to the children. Congratulations, Sharon.
Thank you. Juan Banner.
Um, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor and Mr. Mayor, uh, I attended the last council meeting, and I'll never forget, because I know the mayor has to be everywhere at one time. He took the time out to sit down with me. What I have here, first of all, I wanna say there's one. In my world, I would like to see sexual harassment as a civil crime. I would like for the legislature to change that sexual harassment to a criminal, especially on jobs. So when, whenever anybody goes to, to job and say anything sexual, the police would be called. And let me just say, there's one occupation, especially in the United States of America, that you can't train the person on how to do it. You can't write a book on how to do it, even after the job is done. And that's being a juror. What I have here is what happened to me. I started off with the first termination paper that the company say I did. Oh, let me remind you guys that my wife works there. She just retired. She's still there. Now, I wanna, uh, write the sue letter going up against their lawyer. Wanda Allen, she held that letter, wouldn't give it back. I met another lawyer who only get paid when I get paid. He told me to trust him, called me back three weeks later, told me if I, if I had, if only I had a witness. So what am I saying? The Deputy of Unemployment Appeals, who don't care about the company, C N F Enterprises, and who don't care about me, in other words, not looking for nothing, he called them liars. The last time when the mayor sit down with me, he actually see the letter on purpose. I didn't show on the paragraph, but I got it here. I got it highlighted. In the beginning of this packet, you'll see the first termination paper. You'll see the letter from the Deputy of Unemployment Appeals. Then you'll see a second termination paper that they sent him saying, no, it wasn't sexual harassment. It was misconduct, and they wanna protect the people. Protect the people so much that they didn't give it to their lawyer, so they wouldn't have to deal with, uh, a right to sue letter. This is my story right here. Now, I left out one important part, because I wanna leave it with you guys, and I want somebody to call me, why, why would they do this? Then I'll tell you why. You'll get a hint from, from this packet. But I would like to see sexual harassment on a job changed to, uh, a crime. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Matter of fact, sir, if you leave that with, uh, no, it's so good. Tiffany, put your hand in the air real quick. If you can give that to her, we will make sure that the mayor, uh, gets it. Absolutely, thank you. And last but not least, we have the honorable Sharon P. Scott.
My greetings again, honorable council members. Uh, Mr. Mayor on the mic, hey, look, we in the information superhighway, right?
Mm-hmm.
We can do it every kind of way possible, but it's good to see you all, um, Madam Clerk and City Attorney. Um, I, um, again, thank you for the accolade tonight. The twenty and a half years, it was important to me that I get that resolution instead of having five on my wall. I can just put one, and it sums up the whole thing. So I appreciate that. Also, um, a couple things. Um, I went to a meeting that Senator Lucas had last week, and I spoke to her about the issue of the traffic here at Monterey to Merrimack. And I'm sure you all have all been subjected to it. And I don't know if there's anything that the City of Newport News can do to, uh, advocate for some kind of remedy, uh, to that situation. But if you could, I'd appreciate it. What I suggested, and I did suggest to VDOT, uh, when I served on the Hampton Roads Plan and District Commission, that when I traveled to other cities and other countries, they had a light on the off-ramp. So, uh, uh, maybe one car could go every fifteen, thirty seconds. I'm not sure what the timing was. But right now, the law-abiding citizens are backed up. It took me an hour and maybe twenty minutes to go from Newport News to Portsmouth and to get to that particular meeting. So if there's something you all can talk to, uh, VDOT about, because when people say they came to Newport News and they were stuck in traffic, they don't say they came across the water. They say they were stuck in Newport News. So if there's anything we can do to encourage VDOT to give us some remedy here, you know, not only for people passing through, but for our citizens as well. Uh, secondly, um, I want to, uh, invite everybody to, uh, Women History Month Program at the James River Country Club on Thursday, uh, the twenty-seventh at six P.M. Uh, the Kennedy Firm, uh, which, uh, Justin Kennedy's wife Carmen is here tonight. That's what you say with the camera. And, uh, and they have done a, started a documentary on the four women who served on the council together, which would be Dr. Pat Woodbury, uh, Councilwoman Vick, Dr. Cherry, and I. And it, it started at something as simple as that, but it has morphed into, um, more, where, um, the Kennedy Firm has decided that they would recognize more women across the city, be it medical, uh, education, industrial, or whatever. So you all will be hearing more about that, and, and we hopefully that we can get the city more involved to recognize some of the leaders here at the city, uh, people like, um, Astila McAllister and Florence Kingston. They have been here like forever. So if there's anything we can, we can do. I mean, it's a good thing, but it's been like forever. Thirty-five years at one job is longer than people stay married here. Look how long. But anyways, if there's anything we can do about that, I appreciate it also. Also, uh, I am getting some calls from seniors, because, uh, you know, people pay attention, but they don't, they don't know that I'm not on the podium anymore. And seniors are calling, because, um, thirty years ago, they bought a piece of property for fifty thousand dollars and they were employed. Today, that same piece of property is worth two hundred fifty or three hundred thousand dollars. And, and they're unemployed, they're retired. So I'm not sure, and I, and I haven't looked to see what the city has to offer for our seniors, but if there is anything that you all can do, any other programs you can look at, if there are any modifications. And more importantly, uh, whatever you have available, if you could get it out to Joe Public by any means necessary, the city's channel or in the water bill or whatever, uh, uh, we would greatly appreciate it. And I know my time is up, but as part of privilege, I just wanna offer condolences to our mayor on the passing of his beautiful wife, um, Valerie. Uh, my heart goes out to him and his family, and my prayers are with them. And one more thing, just to thank my family for supporting me tonight, my brother Mike and his wife Felicia and his daughter. Uh, my son was here, uh, my nephew, Nene, and my, uh, One City, uh, celebration holiday team here in the back. They, they have stood with me for twenty and a half years, and we are gonna continue, even though we all said when I retired that we would not do it anymore. We threw up our hands, we tried to give it away. But for some reason, it remains on our heart to be part of what the change is in Newport News. So we will continue to do our empowerment project. And if anybody wants to participate with us, we can always tell you how you can help. So thank you again for the space. I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Councilman Coleman.
Uh, Sharon, real quick, I appreciate you bringing up the, um, the situation with our seniors and their real estate taxes. And, uh, we were briefed today, you know, we have two programs in the City of Newport News that address that. We have an elderly tax exemption and a tax deferral for real estate taxes. And today, the, the manager and his team presented a, uh, proposed budget where we're gonna expand the criteria for the exemption program, so we can include more of our seniors from the community in, you know, in that program. But also, the deferral program is available as well. You can only, what, what month of the year is it that you can apply for deferral?
Used to be August.
Was it August? I, I apologize. I can't remember the month. But once a year, you can apply for deferral. So if you would refer them to, uh, to the city website, all that information is on there. But we'll also get something out to everyone here soon to let them know about their options. But thank you so much for bringing that up.
No, thank you all for having some flexibility in that program. And that was some of the, uh, problem that, you know, some people couldn't fit in, in between the wedge of what was already available. And I encourage you all to continue to try to do more if you can.
Just for a, a clarifying point, if we could have the Director of, of Budget Evaluation, uh, Ms. Lisa Cipriano, she can speak to that question.
Um, the application, uh, process for all the, uh, tax exemption, uh, deferral programs are found on the Commissioner of Revenue's website. The closing of the application for the deferrals and tax exempt, um, is August of every year. So.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much. That is all the names before me. Uh, we are now at new business. Our next item is new business. City Manager.
None, sir.
City Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk.
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Harris.
Oh, and good evenings, everybody. I'm already, um.
Sorry, man.
I wanna thank everybody for coming out on tonight. And, uh, once again, thank you, Ms. Sharon, for your, your service, uh, representing the North District in such a impactful way that you have over your, your tenure. So we are definitely appreciate it. Uh, and we still look forward to all you do at the Denver Community Center for the community, uh, which has continued to be a blessing. And I could publicly say this, because you blessed us at the Safe Haven Empowerment Center, uh, with, I don't know how you get all them bicycles that you get for the kids, uh, but we thank you for your donation to the center to help us bless some of our young people in the community. Speaking of our young people, uh, tonight I wanna acknowledge and highlight another young person in our community that is an ascending star, a young lady by the name of Morgan Bolden. She's a fifth grader at Deer Park Elementary School. She's such a sweet, kind-hearted, and welcoming, uh, spirited young lady that I have an opportunity to meet over the last few years. And she is a, a lovely cheerleader, loves to cheer, sideline, and competition. Uh, but more importantly, she maintains an A on the A B honor roll, uh, since she's been at elementary school. And this most recent marking period, she received straight A's. So I wanted to make sure we highlighted her for her, uh, academic achievement of getting straight A's this last marking period. She's also a representative on her school's S C A, uh, which is the Student Council Association, because been student of the month, received good citizenship awards, and many, many more. And she's also a Hampton University Super Scholar, which she's been recognized by the Hampton University Athletic Department. So one of the things I like to always do is highlight young people that I get a chance to come in contact with when they're doing great things, so that they, the whole city can know, uh, of the young people that are representing in such a powerful and impactful way. So congratulations to you, Ms. Morgan Bolden, and, uh, look forward to the great things that she's gonna do in the near future. And then also, on the same lines, uh, we do wanna continue to keep Mayor Price and his family in prayers, uh, on the passing of Ms., uh, Ms. Valerie Price. And, um, though they had the memorial on this past weekend, uh, so we just wanna make sure we continue to lift them up during this time of, uh, bereavement. And, uh, that's all I have. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Long.
Uh, I wanted to say, uh, thank you for everyone that came out to participate as well tonight. Uh, look forward to this budget season. Look forward to people commenting or bringing forth, uh, questions, uh, of this upcoming budget. We, we have, uh, two public hearings in April that, that's gonna be addressing it. Also, since the, um, childcare operator is still here, I wanted to say thank you for taking advantage of reusing a building. It's childcare, uh, it's one area that we're really trying to, uh, uh, expand our capa- capacity here in the City of Newport News. We really need, uh, good childcare operators. So look forward to seeing and hear more about your, uh, upcoming business. And that's all I have.
Councilman Coleman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just have a couple things. I want to congratulate Ms. Veronica Waymoth. Uh, she was named the two thousand twenty-five recipient of the Joe Frank Legacy of Leadership Award at the, uh, Newport News Police Foundation Breakfast last week. She is well-deserving and, uh, is tremendous asset to our community. So I just once again, wanna congratulate Ms. Waymoth on receiving that award. Also, would like to congratulate Mr. Jaden Alexander. He is a senior at Achievable Dream, uh, High School. And he was named the two thousand twenty-five Boys and Girls Club of the Virginia Peninsula Youth of the Year last week. A tremendous young man. He has a three-point-nine-six GPA. He's a member of the National Honor Society. He's his class president, uh, also captain of the Heritage High School volleyball team. And he's current, currently attending B P C C under the Dual Enrollment Program. And this fall, he is gonna continue his studies, uh, to pursue his dream of becoming a, a veterinarian. So I just wanna say congratulations to Jaden. He's got a very bright future. And I told him last Thursday, I hope that after he goes off and does great things... I told him last Thursday, I hope that after he goes off and does great things in the world and at school, that he comes back to Newport News and starts his career and starts his family, so, um, and I also like to acknowledge my good friend Bishop Kermit Jones, he kinda snuck in in the back from Holy Tabernacle, thank you so much, sir, it's great to see you, appreciate everything you do in our community.
All right, um, I guess what I got is, I will, uh, share the same sentiments in regards to, uh, Valerie Price's home-going service. It was, uh, truly beautiful for a beautiful person, uh, and so my thoughts and prayers will continue to be with the Price family as, uh, they still have to navigate through this troubling time for sure. Um, next thing I will say is to my predecessor who is here, the Honorable Councilwoman Sharon Scott, it is always a pleasure to see you, uh, I thank you for all that you have done for our district, uh, and for, uh, the many, many learning lessons that I learned through you and watching you. So with that, I just say thank you for all that you've done, and everything that was read tonight was well-earned, so thank you for that. And the last thing I'll mention is that it is budget time, it is budget time. So budget time is usually one of my favorite times of the year, however, I know it can be, uh, a very, uh, a hot subject, you know, talking about money, whether that's with your personal family or at a city level, it can get a little gray sometimes, but it also is for the betterment of our community as we align our strategic priorities to what we have going on in the city for our residents. So, uh, with that being said, that is all that I have. If there is no further business... I talked to him, he said he's good. All right. If there is no further business...
Yeah, I talked to him. This was it.
Unless the mayor, they want you to speak, so, I mean, he was having some technical issues, so that is why he will, uh, he will, he will not be sharing with us tonight, but nevertheless, uh, Newport News is in his heart, so with that, we stand adjourned.